Ya'te'abene, Vice President Myron Lizer here. Comanche mis land, Tohana basestin, Ado Comanche desache, Klash de dashanelli. It's good to be with you this morning on our September 8 COVID-19 update, Town Hall update. So before we get started, let's open up with a prayer this morning. Yeah, Dan God, we come to you, Lord. We thank you for another day of life, Lord. We thank you that we can come, Lord, to you as your tender mercies are made new every morning. Father, Lord, as we start off with prayer, Father, your word says if we give you every endeavor, every plan, Lord, that it will be successful. Lord, we pray that you would give us those division and the heart for the plan, Lord, to work for the benefit of the people, Lord. We ask for your wisdom, your great wisdom, which is the principal thing, Lord, Father, to be with us, Lord, as leaders, as division directors, Lord, as directors, Father, that are responsible for many direct services, Lord, and many projects here on Navajo, that if we give it to you, Father, will be successful, Lord. We thank you again. We ask you to be with us in this meeting, Lord. Let the data be true. Let the words that are heard, Lord, Father, be acted upon by the people of the land, Lord, for those are the ones that we care about, that we love, Father, and that we do everything that we can, Lord, to protect, to prepare, to provide, Father, timely information, Lord, the direct services I mentioned, Lord, Father, and ultimately, Father, develop a nation, Lord, that honors you and everything that we do. So we thank you again. Ask your Holy Spirit, your great Spirit, Lord, yeah, Dan God, to be with us, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. So ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, we have the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez, going to be hitting us off here with a lot of information updates as we have been meeting regularly for the last several months. So thank you. Welcome all of you and ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Nez, the President of the Navajo Nation. Yeah, thank you, sir, for your leadership.
Heha'la, shuna', Vice President. Do kudo shkana'n, do elgillnailnash. Niheke'ni yinayi pa'ye'iltke'. Aro nana'nish, inegi naxa' kon naxanana'gi do ba'ye'henitzen. Kudo shuna', Vice President Lizer. Aro di na'oshi hana'ei, kudo niheke'ni yinavich, a'ch'na'n lehtollel. Do johot'a'ei naxa' da'iznel, a'ch'ei ro'shina', naxa' da'isonnel. Tlilindalneshto'lel tadonno'. Johot'a'ei kon naxa' naneshidail. Ei do, nih'be'chpans'and'ao. Ei khot'a'ei ya ba'ye'henitzen, a'ji be'chpans'and'and'ani. A'kui'ji, alha'and'adle'ya. Ado, shi'a' t'hanasnala hadassogon dak'ei, e'oshi do ba'ye'henitzen. Aro, she'ed'odonno', kon ihe be'chpans'and'. Di na'ki jed'ao, di jen'dan, nishone', kudo di't'ao, no'ao, a. Di kus'inschag'i nahast'eitza' t'hanalneli. Ba'dahanne'. A'kui'ji shi ba'dahanne'ya. Anle, radio da'dabiyeh, do di TV da'dabiyeh, o sa'naltsos da'dalbokha'ao. Ba'and'ahui'lna'. Joo'e'a'ei nanthi'nay, shingla'a'ei dat'e'nd'ei. Joo'a'kui'ji, hadainosneda, di no'hot'a'ei ya sa'idi'jekonde'el'i. Nih'chito', nih'ze'pke'dast'eh, o chada'dochka', mehask'edat'egi ch'odal'ne'. Joo'e'a' a'hot'a', ado nal'ya'ba'ha'ganon dak'ei go. A'do ze'l'ego da. Ado, be'so ba'ha'gan'go da. A'ashi'anle'go denen dak'ei go, t'chada'dochka'ao. A'sh'on'ya, di't'ao ch'odal'ne'. Ei do, aro, aro, yed'ego elch'ed'adal'te'ed'ohniya. Aro, nih'la', do t'chala'woshpe'tcha'da'. Di't'egi hand sanitizers dat'egi do ch'odal'ne'. Kon sh'and'asini t'ip'ha'ho, at'chingo da'dadelkhal, do di n'altsos nd'etni. Do hand sanitizers nd'etni. Ei ro ch'odal'ne'. Aro, la', do, di ha'ashi alcohol da'dabiyeh. La'kon ihe ke'ni yinane', la'dei glaya. Ei no'we', nichon, vich'ya'dal'te'ed'oh. B'z'ah'and'ah naldi'. Do e'ya' da'ji'tla', da'di nih'la'dei t'chala'woshnaha' no'we', t'cha'da'. Ki'sa'shon'ish ke'inosdi'n. Aro, kon di hanne', di kon jen'nan'and'ahlne'sh, ki nihe ke'idan'leni. Nixalchin'and'ahlne'sh, ki ya'and'ahlnehya. Na'sa'do, n'altsos khand'a'il'i, oni'jekon'da'il'i. Ako, di jee'liya, di na'ki jen'dan, nishone', nast'e' yolkhalone', September. Ei ya nast'e' demilia'ya, do ba'an nast'e' neznan, di do ba'an alla'. Joo'hot'a'ei kon nihe ke'ni yinane', tes'adabideliya, do abehazin'ye'. Kon di kus'inschag'i bed'at'ol'na'. Joo di enle, mar'ch'ena'daya, di yahillni'ena'dan, di kus'inschag'i d'nevi ke'ya'pokha'ja. Do di jee'jen', joo'e'konelt'ao, e'ya' kon di kus'inschag'i bed'at'ol'na'. Ako, di nahast'e' demilia'ya, do ba'an nast'e' neznan, di do ba'an alla'. Joo'e' alts'hopa'hanne', di kus'inschag'i bed'at'ol'na'. Ako, di nahast'e' demilia'ya bed'at'ol'na'gi, ayat'e' nd'aslin'giya. Ei ya cepi demilia'ya, do ba'ala', nezad'in, do ba'ashlat'in. Do ba'ad'in, enelt'ao, e'yat'e' nd'aslin', ich'adas'kei. Ayah, e'bahijon'ao, do kon batz'odil'sane', yat'e' ich'adas'kei. Shik'ei ro'shina'. Ako, a'do, adajit'enegiya, di kus'inschag'i beni'na'. Ash'lan'ezad'in, do ba'ana', di t'cha'enelt'ao, kon ihe ke'ni yinane'. Di di kus'inschag'i nahlne'gi, b'z'ado, adajit'nat'. E'oshi ke'idan'leni, e'ya' kui'ji shi kon batz'odil'sen'do, de shik'ei ro'shina'. Kon benet'ao, vich'ey'das'ell, do kudo batz'odil'seno, shi e'ya' kon. A'do, hanet'ao, sa'ra'yat'e' shi kon ye'hadal'ne', do lel kon ihe ke'ni yinane'. So e'kon ba'and'ahui'lna'. A'kui'ji, ako ya'kon'ni. Ako, nle, domo', domo', do domo' biskana'gon'ya. Alla'echi, e'alla'edeyya bed'ol'na', hadon'ni. Alla', nle, mar'ch'ena'dan, de'alla', de'all, one day'gon'na', bed'at'ol'na'. A'ya'kon'ni, d'nevi ke'ya'pokha'os, ke'iro'shina'. Ei naxa'shni, do heh, nih'di'ni do lel. A'kon'de, anni, di t'k'echi'n'do, nd'annes'tan'daya. Domo'iyaj'do, domo', do domo' biskana'gon'na'. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, di Labor Day beni'na'. Joo e'di dal'ne'shigi, joo e'shi beh'hanne', Labor Day. A'do, e nih'ke'ni yinane', b'nach'ei kon pokha'na'al'wo'ya, kon naxan'and'ahlne'sh, do ndal'ne'sh. A'ni lts'hosin'de'elnis'ode'. Do shi be'son'ih'ji, jen'at'at'and'ei, la'e'ha'gan'da' oh'ch'uyun'ana'nis'ode'. Joo dan'a'ei ot'a beh'hanne', hanakon'de, la'e'and'ail'ne'shina'ya. Shid'ao'a'kuis'za', and'ail'ne'shina', ako. A'kui'ji, and'ail'ne'sh, ke'iro'shina'. Ako, e'khot'a'beh'hanne', han'da', ako, la', and'al'deh'han'da' abehazin'ya. Joo di computer da'dabiyeh, di bin'dal'kin'igi, dan'lego. A'ni he'ni yinane', nixalchin'igi, ts'oke'ni yinale'ke', a'da'dahl'ne'. Nle, t'chad'sha'and'ech'a'na', sha'and'edad'ahl'no'da'. Sa' kudo di computer da'dabika'innan'ne'. Sha', kudo han'el'ijekon'dail'inen, so ba'ansoskes. La'shi'ot'a'lo ba'ans'ala'kes. La'shi'e'ya' ch'et'das'ok'hai, nle ya'ha'gan'danas'ot'cha'. La'shi'e'ya' a'ya'dla'ha'gan'das'at'ahui'nsen'. La'shi'e'ya' a'ot'a'ke'dahot'ya, ha'ganhas'ad'nan'ish'oh'ch'uyug'ode'. Akon'de, di k'ode', nd'eshni ba'nahasn't. O'gobilagan'abi ke'ya'da'ok'edahat', inegi e'ya' ar'analneli. Ri di kus'inschag'i nahast'eitza' da, a'di khota'te' des'el'ki. E'beni'na', adadi, neshig'ei do'shed'ane', a'da d'nevi ke'ya'pokha'ao. T'chada'dochka'ao, a'ha'gan'danas'ot'cha'da di no'la'. Ako, ihe nixalchin'igi ke'irand'leni, cha'and'ah'kei. Abehazin'ye', do lel. Joo di nd'ail'kagi, e'bilbed'ah'zan'. E'khot'a' lego hos'dogo da, jee'ya'go, do nle sol'eh'de'. Sol'eh'ho'da, n'sen'ya'go. E'di di kus'inschag'i nahlne'gi, bellne'inn'tz'ago. Di nd'ail'kagi bilbed'ah'zan'do, de shik'ei ro'shina'. E'beni'na', bas'hot'te'. Yama'san ba'adah'oshy'ya, nih'che' ba'adah'oshy'ya. Joo kon a'ch't'ada'doh'ine', da di no'. Joo e'ed'oshis'na'ant'ine', t'eer'osh, ke'iro'shina'. Yama'san nih'che'ni nal'ab'nanthi'nay, e'te', ch'irinda'oh'hy'eh. Aro, di nanse', ndan'hi'dak'eh'dahl'ane'gi, di ch'yan'igi es'ta'dahl'eh. Joo di ad'han'iga, ade'ye', a'ts'kin'hl'ego'ye', nih'ed'ao ts'ost'ah'no'da ba'dahanne'. Joo kui'jen', ich'ed'aini'ka', e'beni'na', a'ch't'ada'doh'ine', shik'ei ro'shina'. E'khot'a'ei ya nih'ji'op'ba'de'ini'ke', shik'ei ro'shina'. Aro, census stop'wan'al'te', kud'ris'una', shich'ey'ya, Arbin Mitchell. E'kon d'ne'dayol'tch'ag'i a'jin'nan'eshi'de'chn'eni, ike'des'i. So anni, nle Torion, do Pueblo Pantato', a'do White Horse Lake, kon si ke'inda'inishe'ena'dan. E'ch'yan'do, ha'isi'danos'eni, di kibetlin'da, n'igi'dan nd'asi'ni. Di nle Washington, ne'be'so ch'edet', an'eh'ch'edail', shik'ei ro'shina'. E'be' kon ch'yan'das'i'lini, do e'ben, e'ind'etni, shik'ei ro'shina'. Aro, di ro census, naxa'had'adal'eh, da di no'. Kon a'hot'a'ei ya el'hi'k'hai. So a'la', khot'a' had'ad'illa', di kui'sh'ich'eh. Domo'iyaj'ena'dan, e'le kitsi'ile'je', kitsi'ile'je Black Mesa. Aro Blue Gap, t'ch'ich'eh, do aro, kud'ju, T'Allan Cottonwood, j'eh, do kon si k'hai. E'khot'a', yinane'shude'elia'. Di jee'ei, kud'ji Crystal, t'na'ar'ob'ke'jen', t'cha'ol'elkilo'and'ey k'rei'odel. Aro Red Lake, j'eh, do e'sh'la'ol'elkilo'. Isk'ao'e' t'waj'ile', alta'ya Alamo, bin'ego t'waj'ile'. T'na'ar'o, aro, i, a, e'ya Casamero Lake, de shi'nik'k'rei'odel. E'on ih'p'ah'zan'do, lel, di kon ch'yan'de'etni, di nle CARES Act funds, de ch'inegiya. Be'so ch'edet', an'eh', neznan, de miht'so'enelt'ao, e's'te'ni'nelt'. E'ch'yan'be' ch'ed'ao ilhat'no'. A'do, be' klim'bed'ahl', inegi e'ind'as'i'lini, e'ind'etni, di ch'eshi ke'iro'shina'. Nih'ni yin'ich'eh. Ako, nih'p'ah'zan'do, lel, shik'ei ro'shina'. Aro, a'hot'a', do kud'jo' do Utah, so leha'oz'oj'ed'ane', ke'dahat', n'jiya. Di jee'ei ya Aneth, a'di shi'e' census, do di d'ne'dayol'tch'ag'i a'jin'ban'aneshi'de'chn'ido, lel. Di ch'isk'ao'e' Red Mesa, Mexican Water, do. Aro, di jen'dan, nishone', e'ol'ji t'oj'. Aro, nd'inishe'ne', e'inhah'zas'and', Navajo Mountains, j'eh, do lel. So e'shin'kon n'altsos, nih'j'eh, kud'ahl'net'odel, di social media bi'ya. So e'on ih'p'ah'zan'do, lel, shik'ei ro'shina'. Kudo shi'e' bel'ag'ani k'ech'eh, kon ihe beni'man'je'han'amas'ich'eh.
You know, I want to appreciate everybody for tuning in. Got Tony from Los Angeles, Vicki from Stevenson, Virginia, and folks from Minnesota, Toby from Albuquerque, and many of our Navajo people here on the Navajo Nation that are tuning in. Thank you for, you know, participating and watching. Our Town Hall meeting happens every Tuesdays and Thursdays of every week. So Tuesday at 10:00 AM, Thursday at 6:00 PM. We do this to update everybody on what's happening with COVID-19. Sometimes we give a little bit of report of other things, but it's really focused on the pandemic COVID-19. If you want to get further information or you want additional information, feel free to go to our Facebook pages, our Instagram, our Twitter accounts to get the latest updates. You know, we could be here all day reporting on all things, but today we were really focusing on the pandemic. But on top of that, we are teaming up with the US Census, Arbin Mitchell and his team. You know, we have been very low on the response rate here on the Navajo Nation. We were down by single digits just a month ago, but we've got it moving up. As of September 3rd, 18.7% have responded to the Census self-response rate. And if you can put the agency response rate up, Eli. Thank you, Eli, for doing our Facebook Live today. Fortifyance Agency is at 22.2%. Good job. I mean, you guys are moving up pretty quick. Chinlea Agency, 15.6%. Western Agency, 18.2%. And Eastern Agency, 19.1%. Northern Agency at 19.3%. So those are the agency-wide statistics. And we want all the agencies, you know, let's step up, let's get that rate up. But this is since September 3rd, so that's been a few days ago. But on Friday, we went out, like I said, we teamed up with the US Census. We are doing food and supply distribution. We put $10 million aside for COVID-19 from the CARES Act funding, $10 million aside for food and supplies. So we started to hand out food and supplies from the CARES Act on Friday, September 4th. We were in Torion, Pueblo Pantato', and White Horse Lake that day, and it was a good turnout. Many people came and got registered for Census as well. We appreciate everybody coming out and telling everybody that there was a food and supply distribution. We're also handing out voter information. And, excuse me. And on Saturday, we were out in Black Mesa and Blue Gap Tachi, T'Allan Cottonwood. And again, big turnout for Census. And so if you look at Chinlea Agency, they've been pretty low, 15.6, and Eastern Agency at 19.1%. So we really targeted that area based on the numbers, the low numbers, really. And so we were out there. Today, we're going to be in Crystal, New Mexico, and Red Lake, New Mexico. Crystal at 3:00 PM and Red Lake at 5:00 PM today. Food and supply distribution, US Census, voter outreach, we'll be out there handing those information out to our people. So come and join us for that food and supply distribution. Tomorrow, we'll be in Alamo in the morning, T'waj'ile' at noon, and then Casamero Lake in the afternoon. We'll put the times up on the social media, still planning on that. There's also US Census outreach happening, Census Fairs today in Aneth, Utah. Tomorrow, they'll be in Red Mesa and Mexican Water. Thursday, they'll be in Ojeto, and Friday in Navajo Mountain. So we're really pushing forward on getting people to register for, or self-respond to the US Census. And we're asking everyone to please tell your family members to self-respond. You can do that on the internet at 2020census.gov. Again, that's 2020census.gov. And if you need the phone number, that's 844-330-2020. And again, the email, the website, 2020census.gov. Get registered, please, and let's get these agencies to, you know, let's compete. Let's see who, at the end of this month, will be number one agency-wide. I know we can get the numbers up. And we also filed, joined a lawsuit. You know, the original date for the Census to commence in self-responding was in October 31st. But the folks in Washington DC, the head of US Census, did it earlier. And so that, now the new deadline is September 30th. That's why we're out trying to get people to register before the deadline. But we did say to the feds, you know, we want the original September, October 31st. September, October thirty first deadline. And so we also did a temporary restraining order because. Uh, the census was already closing down shop and, you know, September thirtieth wasn't even. It's still got a few weeks to go, so. The uh, courts uh, put a temporary restraining order. On the US Census so that they don't. Close down earlier, so our goal is to make sure. That we have the entire timeline, which is October thirty first to. Self respond to the US Census, so I just wanted to let you know. That. And from yesterday's numbers. Um. Nine thousand nine hundred and one people have tested positive since the start. To yesterday evening. Nine thousand nine hundred and one. Uh, seven thousand one hundred and fifty four of those individuals have recovered. So if you do the math, you know, those are still um, currently. Uh, positive. We had one positive case, and I want to say congratulations to the Navajo people. Within twenty four hours, that was from Sunday to yesterday, one case. We never had one case in. Since the start of this pandemic, right? And doing a great job, everybody, wearing your mask, social distancing. Um, you know, washing your hands with soap and water, using hand sanitizers. But we can't let up. And we were reevaluating these statuses. And that's the gating measures, they call it. And we, we reopened the Navajo Nation, orange, just four statuses. There's red, of course, that's still closure. Then there's orange, that twenty five percent occupancy uh, uh, is, is. So that you can be able to reopen with the twenty five percent. Of what you average out. To have in your, your, your place of uh, of business or in the office. The next color is yellow. Which is fifty percent. Occupancy and then green. Is, you know, it's everything's good, seventy five to a hundred percent. So we've been seeing some good numbers going down lately. We have seen some spikes here on the Navajo Nation. Fort Defiance and Gallup Indian Medical Center. And this is important, I, I, I hope I can get your attention on this here, ladies and gentlemen. These spikes. Remember, a few days ago. Uh. You have. A few days ago, there was a spike of twenty four cases within twenty four hours. That spike there was contributed to a family gathering. Somebody came back home with the virus. Went to a family gathering. And spread that out to. A big family. And that contributed, I, I want to say thank you to the contact tracers because they. Isolated it, they got it under control. Tell everybody to stay at home, self isolate and quarantine themselves. If you can see that chart that is before you. You can see the one and then the twenty four a few days ago. That was a family gathering. See, we were going to move into the yellow status. But our public health professionals decided. It's a little bit too soon because of Labor Day. We saw many vehicles throughout the nation on the roads. And ladies and gentlemen. Um. Those of you that have social media pages and you post where you're at. Vacationing. Uh, helps us really. When we're doing our contact tracing. Because we know where you're at. And just look at this one instance. Someone went off the nation. And came back and spread the virus within their family. I'm sure that family member is not a happy camper right now. All their family members are probably upset with that individual. But that's the risk that people take when you leave the nation. And just imagine, you look at these numbers, you see that big old spike, that big old curve. It didn't take much to have this spread throughout the Navajo Nation. And so we're asked, we're begging you just to stay home a little bit more, there's nothing wrong. With staying home one year. Just to stay home and take care of your family. There's, I, I'm sure there's plenty of stuff to do at home. A lot of things to do at home. And plus, we're supposed to be preparing for the winter. Help your elders, help your uh, grandmas and grandpas and nulleys. Let's not hear stories of them being by themselves. When they're, when the snow comes. When the CHR has to go out there. And get them food and supplies. It's our responsibility as family members. Now's the time when there's no, you know, mud and snow to be. You know, gathering supplies. For our elders. And so come on. Let's uh, let's help out, let's help out in this endeavor. Overall, five hundred and twenty three total deaths here on the Navajo Nation. Zero deaths within twenty four hours. So one, zero, so we're not going into yellow. Just based on what's happening out there, we decided that we're going to wait. Until we know the numbers for Labor Day. And usually we don't know the numbers within six to eight to ten days, even more. On what the effects of Labor Day weekend was. You know, and uh. I just plead with you all. That uh, we, we uh. Work together, go ahead and go to the next slide, these are just numbers that. Uh, we show from the various uh. Eight service uh, unit areas. Chin Lee, Kianta, Crown Point, Ship Rock, Fort Defiance, Tibbet City, Gallup, and Winslow. A downward trend. Of course, you, like I said, you see spikes in certain service unit areas. And we're monitoring those as well. If you go to the next slide, that shows you the um. The mountain top, I guess, you know, that's that surge, that's that spike. Uh, the first surge that we had back in May. And then we gradually come down, you see those little gradual. Uh, spikes coming down those hills. The, the first one, that, once you get to the peak in May, right, that's the peak, the highest point. In the graph. Now, if you go right down, rightwards down. You see a little bump there. That's from. Uh, Memorial Day weekend. And then you keep coming down, you see how these spikes occur. When there's some holidays, you know. We had uh, Sovereignty Day, no spike again. Uh, but Fourth of July, just a little, little spike there, not that much. But you know, if you look at September now, you can see it flattening out and possibly going up, and that all is equated from. The Gallup Indian Medical Center. And Fort Defiance, just that little uptick there. And that's why we're monitoring uh, this time around for Labor Day. And we're staying in orange status, I'm letting everybody know. But that's what the public health professionals have. Uh, recommended to us, and we're going to stay in orange status. Until we know what the Labor Day uh. Weekend numbers are. If you go to the next slide, there it shows you. Uh, the last seven days. Compared to the United States with the COVID nineteen rates. It's hard to see the first one, I mean, we were at number one at one time, remember, per capita. And then Arizona was number one for some time. Right now, it's South Dakota. You can, that's the way at the top. Now, if you go down, you got all these states, you go down to the first red marker, that's Utah. Utah is twenty seventh. Overall. Twenty seventh, the, the, the twenty seventh state to have the highest COVID positive rate. And that yellow one, that's the Navajo Nation, we're thirty five. Thirty five. And then Arizona forty. And. New Mexico forty two and Colorado forty seven. So that's how it looks right now. For the COVID nineteen rates of. States all across the country and then the red. Red are the states around us, yellows and Navajo Nation. And that's, you know, per capita rate per one hundred thousand. You go to the next slide. Uh, that's the United States. You can see the trending poorly, Arizona and Utah. As you can see that chart. Where it has masks on it, Arizona and Utah don't mandate. Their people to wear masks. Colorado, New Mexico, and Navajo Nation are in yellow, they, they do mandate people wearing masks. So based on that data, I, I would say that masks. Do slow down the spread of COVID nineteen. So it's very important we all wear, wear masks uh, throughout. The Navajo Nation, even off the nation. And if you go off the nation, wear a mask, I was in Winslow. I saw all the Navajos wearing masks, good job. And all the non Navajos, they weren't uh, wearing masks. So continue to wear your mask. Next slide, I think it's the COVID nineteen on campus, this is what I saw this morning. On the news. At seven twenty nine uh, AM. Uh, Phoenix News. Uh, Eli, go ahead and put that COVID nineteen on campus slide up. Uh, I took a picture of a slide that was being shown on television. That shows that uh, that there's new cases on our campuses. So our children, Navajo children could be going to school here. Tell them to abide by these. These public health orders. Wear your mask, tell them to wear your mask, social distance, carry hand sanitizers. Stay in your dorm as much as you can, you know. University of Arizona. Have seventy nine cases there. University of Arizona in Tucson. Northern Arizona University has thirty four cases. Arizona State University. Has eight hundred and twenty five active cases. And so we really need to let our children know those, everybody know, not just our children, all the students there. I know that these are so many outbreaks happening throughout the uh, country and universities. It's because they don't follow these uh, public health orders. And so we want them to follow those public health orders. And those CDC criterias. Flu tests are going to be offered, we're going to. Show a schedule soon, we're compiling all the schedules from all the eight service unit areas. So that there will be one document so everybody can. See where these flu shots are going to be offered throughout the Navajo Nation. And uh, listen out for that, well, I'm hoping we can get it by Thursday for our next um. Town hall meeting. Lastly, uh, just wanted. Uh, uh, give a pitch. Out to the tenth annual virtual running for stronger and healthier Navajo Nation, just started yesterday, ten weeks. And the reason why I bring this up is like, what does this got to do with COVID nineteen, you know? If you have a strong immune system. If you're eating right and having physical activity. You're building your immune system to fight off viruses. That includes the flu. And that also includes COVID nineteen. And some people have gone through uh, COVID nineteen. Without all those severe symptoms because they have strong immune systems. Uh, maybe they're sometimes asymptomatic too, you know, walking around with the virus, but have strong immune systems. Um, but it, it's always good to get checked for COVID nineteen if you are feeling those symptoms. What's being showed here is just a ten week running walking plan. We're challenging people. If you want to challenge yourself to run a five K, a ten K or half marathon, and you don't know really how to start. Here's a running plan, see, week one, their Monday, yesterday was the rest day. So today, if you want to start going and say, hey, I want to run a five K or a ten K. You can see on the Sundays in the bowl, it says, in three weeks, if you follow this plan. Of course, you have to get. Uh, you gotta be careful with physicians uh, support. But if you follow this plan within three weeks. You can run a five K. And if you uh, want to run a ten K, within five weeks. You can run a ten K, six point two miles. And if you want to really challenge yourself, if you never ran a, a half marathon. And you want to, if you follow this plan with the, you know, guidance from healthcare professionals. You could run a thirteen point one miler in ten weeks. If you follow the plan, so if you look at week one, rest yesterday, today you would walk or run one mile. Wednesday, walk or run, uh, run one mile, Thursday, one mile, Friday you rest. Saturday, you would do one point five miles. Running. Uh, Sunday, what physical activity means is you don't have to run. You could do any type of physical activity for thirty minutes, that's walking, biking, riding your horse. Whatever physical activity, work outside for thirty minutes, you know. That's what that means, and if you follow this. Uh, this is, this was helped me at the early on, at the beginning, when I started running too, and it'd be helpful. So if you want something to help you, here's, here's something. Uh, and you just have to register to Nav, in an SDP dot org, ten weeks. Uh, and there's also other um. Uh, other items too, that you can participate in, there's a scavenger hunt, there's also photos, you know, during the lockdown, you can walk. Uh, from your house to other areas, or you can go and run and get pictures of yourselves in. Uh, awesome places here on the Navajo Nation. And then we'll do a photo collage at the end of every week. Of where you're at with your family, you know, bring your family. Uh, and then get some outdoor activity together, you know, and of course, wear your mask, social distance. Wash your hands and things like that, so you'll register in whatever um. Navajo Special Diabetes Project for the, the, the office that you register under, they will contact you. Because there's many, there's some in Fort Defiance and Ship Rock, Chin Lee, Tibbet City. And then they will get you further information, but there's information on the webpage. The Navajo Nation's Special Diabetes Program webpage. Of the things that you, this is all an honor system. So meaning that you track your own, it's all virtual, it's not, we're not running together like we did. Uh, all those nine other years, you know. This year, because of the virus, we're going to all be doing it virtually, that means it's on you. Uh, you could do it on treadmill, you could do it out there around your house. However you want to track it, write it down and, you know, send it back to us. There'll be some uh. Rewards or awards, I mean, I hate to say awards, because it's not competitive. Uh, but there'll be items such as water bottles, backpacks, coins, things like that will uh. Present to uh, others out there, and for those that. Can't run, you know, you can walk or you can do some biking, even walking. And doing some uh, um, weight training too with your arms, that's all physical activity that you can include. In, in this tenth annual running for a stronger, healthier Navajo Nation, you know, last year. We had a great run all uh, into Zuni and back to Navajo. Two years ago, we ran uh, from Fort Sumner back and, and, you know, this is ten years now. And I, I, I've been privileged and honored to run eight of those years. Vice President Rex Lee Jim at the time started this and we kept it going. And now it's in, in its tenth year. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'll stop there and I'll turn the time over to Vice President. Remember, don't let up. Continue to wear your mask, please, social distance. Uh, wash your hands with soap and water, hand sanitizer usage is. Uh, recommended and also um, as much as you can, stay home. Schools are out there, they're all online. Uh, there is a move to uh, try to get some hybrid, but our position here at the Navajo Nation is that. It stays online for the rest of this semester up, up in January, so. God bless you, take care of yourself. But the. Uh, Vice President of the, uh, Navajo Nation, uh, take it away. Vice President Meyer Lizer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all of that. All the data, everything you do. Thank you for your leadership. Uh, appreciate you all out in Facebook land on this COVID-19 Town Hall update. Um, so, uh, not to be redundant, uh, usually try to make sure, uh, all the facts and figures and data and information that our president shares that I don't share, although, uh, you know, some of it does get redundant and, uh, need, needfully so, you know, health, uh, protection, protocols, all that stuff. We seem to be saying all the same thing, uh, from presenter to presenter. So, um, so if I do cover some of those things again, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, please forgive me, but, um, as we open up and recover safely, I believe ours is an economy that, you know, we can open up safely. And currently, as President mentioned, we are at the orange level. Uh, the reopening status schedule that you can find on the internet there, uh, if you just go to NavajoRecovery.org, you'll find it. But you'll see there that our reopening status, uh, status schedule is based on a color-coded system. And presently we are at the orange, um, orange level. Um, each color represents a different, um, level of reopening activity and what you're allowed to do, what we're allowed to do, the businesses that are opening and stuff like that. So the nation's status, status will vary over time and will depend on a number of, uh, great gating criteria and other public health, uh, considerations which indicate how well COVID-19, um, the nation is being contained and how well the Navajo Nation is able to manage it. So as you know, we're all in this together. The decision about which status, status then the nation is at, is at any given time will be made by the Navajo Nation Health Command Operations Center or, um, uh, HCOC. And so yesterday we met with them and, uh, this, you know, went through that with our health professionals and, uh, yeah, the numbers look very, very promising, although, um, President mentioned also, we just came out of Labor Day, it being yesterday. Uh, we were wanting to assess again in another couple of weeks. Uh, so potentially we are at the orange level here for another couple of weeks until we can take a 14-day weighted average here, moving average of 14 days and what it looks like. So uh, again, congratulations to our nation, all you all. One, one, one positive case yesterday. Very promising numbers as we go forward here. So, uh, this week, our Economic Recovery Work Group will convene to discuss our reopening. You know, once we get to that yellow status, uh, which is the moderate low restrictions, all businesses will be allowed to open and, uh, they'll be allowed to open on a limited basis. And so if you're able to go to that NavajoRecovery.org, you'll be able to see this and, and read it and become very, uh, you know, knowledgeable about it. But, uh, all businesses will be allowed to open once we hit the yellow, uh, uh, criteria there. And so for more information, again, NavajoOpening.org, plain and simple like that, if you have any questions. We do know that there have been questions. There's also been mob people, I guess, trying to facilitate it if they could, you know, again, as a business owner, um, sometimes you feel justified, you know, if your area is not, uh, undergoing, uh, you know, spiking, your numbers are low. Um, you know, we, we still need to advocate on the nation as a whole, though, the, at the aggregate, as our health professionals say, because well, obviously they're the smarter ones, they're the brighter ones, right? And so, uh, they kind of guide and, and assist us in making our decisions. But uh, last week we had talked to Senator Mitt Romney's office and Congressman Curtis's office of, uh, the Utah Navajo area and business owners are wanting to know if they can open up and, you know, uh, perhaps get some consideration. But as you know, we are all in this together. And so with a couple more weeks of assessing the numbers, uh, potentially we could open up as we move to a yellow status. So let's be in prayer, let's continue to be vigilant on, uh, our protocols and of our observance of it as well. So also in our, um, economic recovery, we will begin to look at not only what, uh, opening looks like here on Navajo, as we have seen a number, a rising number of our people, uh, commence to observing yard sales, you know, uh, uh, quasi flea market, uh, markets that are just springing up here along the roadside. And, you know, it's timely enough, we are in the harvest season. Uh, there's corn, steamed corn, there's melons and squash and all kinds of delectables that, uh, our farmers have grown. And so these, um, little selling stations all around the Navajo Nation is, are springing up. And so we still need to maintain our vigilance there. And as those, uh, types of gatherings are, I guess, being assembled, we, we still need to, uh, to, you know, just again, uh, maintain our utmost adherence to the protocols, the health protocols that are out there. And so we're, we're looking at that. How do you monitor that? How do you make, ensure that people are, you know, um, um, using their mask and, and different things like that? So, uh, one thing we want to be clear on is that, um, you know, we're able to continue to open up and, and recover safely. So, um, we also need to know that, um, you know, as we start to open up there, that, uh, businesses are, um, able really establish to have all the PPEs and, and whatnot. So as we chime in with them, get their feedback, we'll know what opening up. Our, our Economic Recovery Group also will be looking at, um, going forward, not only recovering safely, but going forward, what new businesses, uh, uh, new opportunities, presentations and vetting those, uh, possible viable new businesses. As you know, we have the great need for our own PPEs here, you know? I think companies are looking at Navajo now and seeing if, uh, we might be able to, to assist, maybe with some land or some, you know, ability to bring into our, um, our communities, some, uh, factories or, or some businesses that are able to readily, uh, produce and manufacture PPEs or maybe even, you know, store or sell, uh, PPEs here. Uh, we're talking about masks, uh, we're talking about ventilators, we're talking about, um, face shields and gowns and the like. So, you know, we need to look in at every opportunity as it presents itself. So our Economic Recovery Group will be working along those and, um, also, you know, if you know somebody out there that's, uh, looking to, um, uh, start a business or bring their business back to Navajo, we are, um, open for business and we have been for a while and it takes time to to create the momentum and synergy that's needed to bring all of these ventures to fruition. And so we continue to mine every opportunity that's out there. Um, lastly, I, I just want to echo what our, our president said. Well, next to last, uh, I, I do have one more, um, update here. But, um, what he said about getting active, you know, it's, it's very important to, to think about the ramifications, right? There's always a cause and effect. If you need a healthy lifestyle, you're probably most, more than likely live a long, you know, uh, life and, uh, you know, little complications. Of course, if our, our lifestyles are compromised now and, you know, we depend too much on, um, you know, not minding our diets, you know, uh, maybe, um, um, we have some, some habits that, uh, you know, are hard to control. And so we go down that road and then we live a lifetime with that. And then we end up in our, um, 50s and 60s and we have health problems and conditions. Well, you know, what President said has some truth to it about getting more active, you know, running, uh, walking, treadmill, you know, working out, lifting weights, uh, burning calories and becoming healthier. Because, uh, you know, having a healthy body and a frame of mind also, uh, uh, leads to a stronger immune system. And so it's been established that the COVID-19 affects those that have a health condition already. And so when the virus does, you know, an individual contracts the virus and they already have underlying health conditions, that there's a higher risk for, um, morbidity. There's a higher risk for the, the COVID-19 to, uh, uh, act on that body, you know, a lot tougher, a lot harder, you know, to the point of requiring, um, prolonged medical attention, maybe, uh, stay in the hospital or, or, you know, much worse, God forbid, you know, that, uh, you, um, people die from it. And we have had over, you know, 500 plus, uh, people of our dear people who have passed on. So, uh, the idea that President is, uh, touting, I fully am on board. I've been, uh, active, uh, runner, uh, you know, not competitively, but just running because to relieve stress, to stay healthy, clear mind, uh, over the years, you know, 30 years of, of that pretty much. Uh, due to COVID, for four and a half months, I was just here in front of the computer doing meetings, you know, meeting to meeting, WebEx to WebEx, Zoom to Zoom, phone calls and for four and a half months, just stayed put. Didn't do nothing. I tell you, I was a little, uh, longing to get out and do something, to walk, to run and, uh, admire the runners running on the trails on the side of the highway and just say, you know, someday, I'll, I'll do that myself. Uh, just after Father's Day, my, um, wife and my son bought me a pair of running shoes and I don't need another pair of running shoes, but the idea and the, um, possible motivation that I could get from, uh, getting another pair of running shoes, uh, really, uh, paved the way for me making that decision, praying about it, getting released into starting to run again, you know, during this COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, it's the best thing I've ever done. Um, in seven weeks, I've lost 15 pounds and, uh, feel good. My bright, clear mind, get out very early in the morning because, you know, my day is filled with meetings. And so get out and run before the sun comes up, before the, even the chickens get up, uh, I'm out there running. And so, um, Mr. President, I'm, I'm happy to say, uh, for September, my mileage is at 12 miles, uh, this eighth day, uh, tomorrow I'll run again. So I'll add another four to five, uh, miles to my total. So well on my way. Thinking about pushing the envelope, maybe I'm trying to get a little higher mileage here just for September, just to say that I did it. Maybe to show off a little bit too, I don't know. I mean, you know, a man's ego needs to be, uh, uh, so anyway, I, I'm just saying that, you know, getting active, getting a, a, a healthier lifestyle can help dissipate the risk that COVID-19 brings on and potentially what, what is the next the virus look like? So if we can, uh, come into those seasons of pandemics or whatever, you know, again, we don't know what it looks like, but becoming a healthier individual is proven, you know, to, to, uh, mitigate the effects of COVID-19. Um, for all of those, uh, hundreds of thousands across the North America and the United States here that have contracted this virus, 6% of them have, uh, you know, passed on, uh, again, due to pre, um, um, COVID-19, uh, health conditions. And so if we can get healthier, it, it just means, uh, that we'll have a better chance of fighting off the virus, you know? And that's kind of the whole tension out there abroad, you know, we wear masks, no masks, you know, can government stipulate and push it on us? Well, you know, it's proven, as President said, that masks do save, masks do mitigate, uh, the spreading of the virus. And then you help yourself by being a healthier individual. So, uh, just a little bit, a little bit there. Um, so anyway, we appreciate you all. Um, and then lastly, my update here, uh, some of you may notice, you look outside, you see the wind blowing, uh, hopefully all that smoke's getting blown away. But, uh, we have one more day of warm temperatures today and then tomorrow, um, we may get some snow in the higher elevations. And so, um, if a storm, storm front, uh, arrives today and the winds are blowing right now, uh, bringing those gusty to weatherly winds. Uh, winds turn northwest through northeast Tuesday night and into Wednesday. Expect showers and thunderstorms. Even today, I think two o'clock supposed to rain, uh, seeing on the forecast here. But, uh, uh, again, in those high elevations, expect snow there uh, in the higher elevations of the Chuska Mountains. So freezing temperatures are possible Tuesday night and Wednesday night and in the higher elevation. So protect your animals, be mindful of your animals and, uh, you know, again, most of you are running around and, uh, chopping wood, hauling wood, getting wood for your family, your elders and those that can't get out. And so be careful when you get out there, as I said earlier. Um, and so the, the last part of the week will have less wind and warmer ten, uh, temperatures will return and going through the weekend. So more product, uh, full, um, you know, wood cutting is, uh, in our future. So again, be careful, uh, President and, uh, myself, the Vice President and the First and Second Lady, we are all praying for you, uh, across our great land here. You all are, are much loved. You are, uh, all very important and we, uh, give you these updates, uh, for you, for your benefit and, uh, we hope that you act on it and we hope that you're also, uh, uh, blessed by the information, the transparency and, um, the things that are going on. So appreciate you all. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, from, uh, the Census 2020 Outreach, uh, the Director Arben Mitchell with some timely updates. And so please stand up and be counted. Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Arben Mitchell, you're up next.
Thank you, Vice President. Also thank you to the President uh, for doing the fuel distribution and the census event over the weekend, Friday and Saturday. So I did my workout during those two days. Over on Eastern Agency on Friday and then on, um, Chinlea Agency on Saturday. Over 100 vehicles over, um, the, the, the six events over the weekend. So thank you to the, also the President, Vice President for putting on that event. A, a 2020 Census. September 30th. Um, agency response again, but as a whole, Navajo Nation were at 18.7. That was as of Thursday. Although because of the holidays, you know, it's, it's, it's the update, the day later. And usually they update every, every, every day, every day at two o'clock. They, uh, probably, hopefully we're past 19% by, by today. The self-response. First time that in the nation or Navajo that will be doing self-response. We were given the opportunity to self-response. Update leave, update leave. Uh, we did that. So, uh, June the 11th, uh, we started leaving questionnaires at your, at your residence, whether on the gate, if they were closed. On the, on the, on the door handle. That's where, when you got your questionnaire. So the internet is 2020census.gov. It's 2020census.gov. 844-330-2020, if you want to, uh, call in your, your response by phone. You can mail that back in. Uh, it, uh, self-step, uh, envelope. You don't have to pay to, to send it back. Um, as of Thursday, I thought, yeah. I, I, internet, the 3.9% out of that, uh, 17, 18.7. Only 3.9% has done it by internet. Once, once you leave, when you're, once you leave, uh, a growth town, uh, uh, once you go into the rural area of, of Navajo, uh, internet, uh, I mean connectivity, uh, uh, don't, a lot of houses, a lot of household or without a, a computer. That's a 3.8%. Other than others again, whether they phone or mailing it back, uh, 14.8%. I can probably say that a lot of this 14.8 is probably mailing it back, yeah. I don't, the other way to respond. In person. Uh, and we're going to be doing in-person interview uh, for non-response. You can still self-respond right now. That way you don't have a census worker. Uh, every evening, update. Self-response. Uh, we'll be at Red Lake and Crystal. Mobile questionnaire system. So today, today, uh, Utah Census Fair. Uh, chapters in Utah, although in the Utah Commission, other human, human rights commission. A census fair in the Utah, you know, portion of Navajo Nation. Today. Uh, Thursday. Monmouth Valley Travel Center. Friday, go in Navajo Mountain. President. Red Lake, Crystal, today. In the Casamero Lake. Other areas. Tomorrow. Thursday, Chinli, Camera. Friday, mini forums. Saturday, Saturday, September 12th. September 12th. Fire Rock, Navajo Gaming Commission. If you still have your census questionnaire, you can bring it over to Fire Rock Parking Lot. And then they go food distribution. A lot of these participants or household, they stay in the vehicle. We help them with their questionnaire. And we're wearing masks and then also social distancing. We buy by those requirement. So Fire Rock on Saturday, from 9 to 2 o'clock. Fire Rock. On the mobile questionnaire assistant program that we have under Census. We only have 23 days, 23 days counting today. The other area Census Office. I don't know if we'll finish, but we need to really increase our self-response. We'll be helping the operation part of the non-response follow-up. But before I close, yeah. Before I close, President, Agency. There's certain chapters that are doing real good. They're almost at 30%. Herford, Noyzi, and Councilor, they're at 25.5. Although in Anza and Upper Fruitland, they're at 22%. Crown Point, Little Water, Lake Valley, Bessanti. When we did a roadblock last couple Fridays ago, in this area, right now, they're at 22%. So they increased their percentage by 1.2 since we did the roadblock. So these are some of the areas that are doing, that are doing real good. Hopefully they can all catch up. Though increase our response rate. Just to give you folks, viewers, an update. If you can help one or two families, and if there's 1,000, 2,000, 5,000 of us that can help one or two families, imagine, you know, we can bring up the numbers. Dr. Fowler.
Thank you for all tuning in. You know, just want to acknowledge all our Navajo Nation employees, our leaders that are tuned in. Thank you, we appreciate all that you do for our people and our nation. We would like for you to, it's not every day, it's pretty much every day that we're saying this, is to continue educating you on the virus. As you all know, there's no vaccine for the virus, and we want you to continue to wear your mask, keep the social distancing, continue washing your hands. We have the telecommuting policy, the flexible work schedule, alternative work schedule for our Navajo Nation employees. So those are all implemented, they're available on our website, and I'll share those in a few minutes. Our offices, most of our offices are on limited services. They are open, you know, and we do continue to encourage our employees to provide a timely response by phone call and even by email. So those are some of the numbers that we share. We do have most of the offices that are open, and our NoShan Navajo Occupational Safety Hazard Administration personnel have been making their rounds, doing checks to making sure that our employees are wearing their PPEs properly. And they are making those checks, and then we do those daily reports. We are still on travel restrictions for our Navajo Nation personnel, unless it's a dire, dire need to go and to do some inspections or investigation in various areas. We do ask that you all be counted, as Mr. Mitchell has stated earlier. You know, we are going to put out a notice sometime today to our Navajo Nation employees, that if you can take some time aside during work to be counted. It does not take no more than 10 minutes, you know, we can do it online. We would very much appreciate that. And I know we're telling all of you to continue to prepare yourself for winter. And at this time, I'd like to share some information with you. I do have some information here, we do have some of our DPM updates. We do have COVID leave procedures. The COVID leave procedures were issued back on August 31st to provide guidelines for programs for addressing COVID leave requests submitted by employees to care for themselves or for a family member. Or to be away from the workplace as required by their supervisor for the Navajo Nation Personal Policy Manual and applicable laws and regulations. Upon receiving the approval from your supervisor, all documents shall be forwarded to DPM for appropriate action. The maximum number of hours allowed under COVID leave under this policy is 120 working hours. For any additional leave, an employee may request to utilize this or her approved leave or annual leave be approved without pay or family medical leave. Employees on leave without pay or family medical leave may consult with our Employee Relations Department. Another information that we like to share is we have a total number of resignation and retirements as of September 4th. Altogether, we have a total of 82 personnel that have resigned. The Another one, DPM news alert. Our recruitment section will be contacting the division to schedule a meeting to discuss their plans on how to recruit any of their field, to help fulfill their vacant position. The Employee Relations Section will be issuing the revised family medical leave procedures within conjunction with our General Service Employee Relation. To ensure the timely processing of COVID leave request programs are to afford all approved leaves. And also DPAF. Special Duty Pay. The Special Duty Pay does not require a PAF, however. For any timely processing of PAFs, our program managers are encouraged to adhere to the submission schedule that is issued by DPM. We do, the Department of Personnel Management do accept electronic documents. They'll continue to accept all personnel documents by email. Auto Office of Controller. So there's information there to where, how, where you can retrieve all those documents or email the documents with support services, Recruitment Section, Classification, Pay Section, Employee Relation, and then also Administration. And each and every one of us were inspired by an individual or an item here. Aya, the Ascat, Lato, Asians, Fca, it really goes back to our vision. Our vision provides us direction and guidance to reach our goals. A learner chooses his or her cultural learning style and experience as a way to set goals and priorities. Builds positive relationship and recognizing an individual's value, expressing concern for their need often goes a long way. Aya, motivation. It's developing good behavior, attitude, good personality. We develop good motivation, we will have positive feelings and learn to listen. A self-awareness. The more you know about yourself, the better you are at adapting to life changes that suit your needs. The more you pay attention to your emotions and how you work, the better you will understand why you do things the way you do. Aya. Aya.
Dr. Fowler for the introductions. And want to welcome everyone to the call this morning for joining the information regarding COVID-19. We are still in a pandemic. Thank you to President and Vice President, and also Mr. Mitchell for providing very important information regarding the census and also the continuation of keeping our guards up and making sure we continue to stop the spread. One case as of yesterday. Congratulations to us for all of that. But I know we also had some public, probably family gatherings this weekend. So we're carefully monitoring these incidents that could potentially happen in the next couple of days, in the next two weeks. So the recommendations from the medical and public health professionals, as we have a team of individuals from the COVID-19 Response Team that provide these recommendations are included of individuals that are with the Navajo Area Office, the Indian Health Service, the tribal health organizations, 638 organizations, and also the Navajo Nation. I just want to thank those individuals on continuing to provide information. Hospitals report data to us every day. So I just wanted to, I guess I forgot to introduce myself, sorry about that. I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health, and I'm currently working in the Command Center as well in addressing the pandemic. So let me go ahead and just continue back on with the updates regarding the decision-making around our expectations for the pandemic. As indicated, we did go over a new, not a newer, recent holiday, a three-day weekend. So we're going to be carefully monitoring those. And so public health messaging is very important, and I'll go ahead and some of these in a little while again. But as we all have mentioned before, just to make sure we take all the precautions that we can, even though the numbers are low, we still don't have a vaccine, we still don't have a cure. So the best we can do is use our public health toolkit that we have. And those are just basic things that will help us also prevent the flu. Seasonal flu is going to occur, it occurs every year. Both are respiratory-like diseases, both with COVID and the regular flu season. So there will be a lot of, I guess, concerns about what, if a person does have COVID or not. And we just want to make sure that we prevent a lot of these, as we all have been doing a good job. But we also can't let up. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and just give information to everyone regarding the education that we like to provide. And these consist of, basically... Basically. Going back to just the regular steps that we talk about, ensuring that we do social distance, we wear a mask. Indoors and outdoors, washing your hands for twenty seconds or more and disinfecting. Um high-touch surface areas, when these are all the places that you go to. In your vehicle, at your workstation, at home. Where are those areas and I think we're all familiar with this, door handles. Um faucet handles, I mean refrigerator handles, remote controls. And those are some high-touch surface areas that people might. Um touch every day and just to. Kind of identify what those are, it's very important. Also to continue to wear your mask in public places, I know we just got over the first of the month week as well. But some of us might be still shopping this week, um doing our errands, going in and out with our grandma and grandpa as well or. Or our mother and fathers out there to um pay for bills. Go into town and so just continue to make sure you reduce your risk by wearing your mask. Um staying within six feet of others and also wearing it properly. And making sure you wash your hands after removing your mask. And maintaining it and washing it is also another thing. Keeping it um running it through the laundry cycle and drying it properly or if there are other materials that might. Wear out faster, you might have to hand wash and make sure you soak it in bleach as well. And so those are just some reminders and we. As I mentioned with the Labor Day that just happened, um happy belated Labor Day, but I think one thing. Um over the weekend, if we didn't do these, these are just as a reminder, as President mentioned that these are some spikes that have occurred. Through our small rebounds that we've had um for Memorial Day and Fourth of July. To avoid large gatherings, I mean protect our elders, um as we know many of our people. Our relatives um have underlying health conditions too. And it's just not to protect yourself, it's to protect them as well. Washing your hands often, as I mentioned, and also frequently cleaning high-touch surface areas. Discourage handsakeing and hugs, um I think people can. Still um do the elbow bumps and things like that, but I'm basically just making sure that you have a hand sanitizer that's available. I think as we do our shopping, there's more that um you can purchase even at um nearby. Um grocery stores or either in towns now, so. I think um hand sanitizers are now back to being on shelves, so I don't think there's a shortage, so. Um if you haven't purchased one, they're out there, um keep it in your purse, keep it in your vehicle. Um keep it on your workstation at work, um have one available and when you are at home. For your guests that do come in, even though if it's your own family. Um we keep one and a hand sanitizer available. Um right at the entrance to our home, so it's just really important to make it accessible. And also um avoids sharing food with people you don't live with and if that did happen. I think that's the really, one thing to avoid is just um bringing your own food. Um open fires, flea markets, food sales and yard sales are prohibited on the Navajo Nation, so. Just continue um to keep those um. As part of your um list, these are not um allowable yet, so just refrain as much as you can from it to avoid. Um transmission of covid nineteen. And just as a reminder of um handling cash during this pandemic. Um we are still in a pandemic, so. Make sure when you do um any transactions, make them as contactless as possible, meaning you run your um. Debit card um to pay for. Um items rather than paper. Wash your hands after you handle cash. But don't touch your face or eat food at the same time when you are, after you handle cash. And so make sure you properly sanitize your hand. And also disinfect your wallets, phones and keys while you're traveling and also. Possibly wear disposable gloves and I always like to keep the disposable gloves for the um. Gas pump and so. And that's one thing that when you're driving, of course you need gas, so um I always like to keep disposable gloves in my. In my vehicle for the for the gas pump, that way you don't really transmit any germs, so. And also you can use your glove to push the pin pads and put the gas in. And those are, and dispose of them properly too, make sure you don't let it. You just don't throw it beside the trash man or anything, make sure you put it in the trash can. And also disinfect any items after when you get back in your vehicle too, I mean one thing that you do is. Making sure that you don't, after you. Um pump the gas with your gloves, you don't want to go in your vehicle and start diving with your. The gloves on your hand on your um steering wheel, of course then you're moving the germs from. The gas pump to the steering wheel, so. The point of that is that you still disinfect and make sure. That you're not um con, you're not touching a lot of items with your gloves afterwards, that there should be only limited to the gas pump or the pin pad. And discard it and then making sure you clean your hands. But when you do get to a safe place, like. Going into the gas station or either um at home, you can properly wash your hands for twenty seconds. And also the census, if you're participating in the census, um wear a mask when a census representative visits your home. Um you might have a mask at your door, like I said, with the hand sanitizer, so when someone visits. Then knocks on your door, that's not in your house household, you can just. Put on that mask out of precaution. Maintain a six-feet distance um when they're completing the questionnaire. Avoid handshakes, avoid sharing items, also clean and disinfect all items used to complete the questionnaire. And wash your hands after completing the questionnaire. Also, as I mentioned with the first of the month, I feel like we are still in the first of the month as. As we're coming into the this week, even though we had a holiday. If you see our grandma and grandpa, ni chi don him asanising, when you see them out in the. Stores, um you can help them with um getting in lines before you or others. So they don't have to stand in the line that long, um you can help them wipe down their. Um shopping cart if they're coming in with no help. Um help them clean their groceries if um if they feel like they need it and also continue to check on our elders. But still practicing all the precautions that we talk about. Um it's just a matter of ensuring that we do um help our elders. Um during this time when they really need to get resources, but they need to move around. Um some items that we should consider when we grocery shop is be prepared and be safe. This means preparing a grocery list, um having one person go into the grocery store. I think recently I still see like three or four people going into their grocery store and so limit. Um the number of individuals for those that only need to go into the grocery store. And then um verify the hours um as we listen some of their curfews and their restrictions. Um the hours have definitely changed, so you may want to check on your grocery store hours. Take gloves and a fast face mask and sanitizing wipe. In a disposable bag, I always appreciate bases for. Making sure they have a hand um washing station and also. The wipe stair to clean down your um. Your your basket and also to take your temperature at the beginning before you enter. So you're always re-insured when you go into places like that, that those are some precautionary steps that can help prevent covid. Also, before you shop, um exit your vehicle, make sure you put on your gloves and mask. I have seen a couple of times people forgetting their mask and then um. They have to go back to their vehicle, so that's only happened a few times every time I go grocery shopping, so. Um just as a reminder, I think um we do forget, but that's okay. Also um wiping down your basket and cart is very important and then while you're in the store. And people have gotten good about that, I mean they do maintain their six feet apart, um so that's always nice to see. Also, while you shop, limit. Time in the store as much as you can, um as you. Want to provide a um grocery list will help you rather than. Um trying to figure out what you need to purchase. Buy only what you need as well, stop which sight not touch, avoid touching unnecessary surfaces. And after you shop, step four, before you enter vehicle, remove gloves, place in the bag and dispose. And that's the same thing that I had talked about with the gas pump, if you're pumping gas and you. Put your gloves on, then you go in your vehicle and you start touching items, it's the same concept here when you go grocery shopping too. Make sure you find a place to discard your gloves and remove. Remove it and put it in a bag where um put on a hand sanitizer. Or use a hand sanitizer immediately, then wash your hands thoroughly when you get home and. Rinse your products as well when you get home, just to um clean those as well. And when you do wash your hands. For twenty seconds, um make sure that you wet your hands completely. It's always important to continue to take preventive actions, but doing it properly. Apply enough soap to cover all your hand surfaces and these are good practices that you can teach your kids while you're at home. Uh while kids are still at at home and not going back to school, if you teach them these. Healthy habits. Then schools will be a little bit more sure that kids are able to. Um practice safe hand washing practices. And then hand and then rub your hands together and scrub everywhere, um I always like the going in between. The hands and then you have to wash your thumb. And then you have to wash your palms and then on top of your hands and your lower wrists. So that does take time after you do it, concentrate on all areas of your hand. Um that it does take twenty seconds, sometimes we just probably never thought about that and you just grab. Put soap in your hand and do the your palm only and then take off, but that's not effective. So practicing um proper hand washing is very important. Make sure your wrists hands with water and then dry hands completely. Um with a towel or air dry. And don't just take off when your hands are still wet. It's also important to still remember that we do have in this pandemic asymptomatic individuals which show no symptoms of the disease, but they can be easily. Um infect infect others and be considered carriers and they can show mild to no symptoms at all. And so if you know someone that has been exposed, make sure that person self-quarantines for ten days. And also symptoms can appear between two to fourteen days. So right now, like we are. At the, we've completed the Labor Day weekend, so when we talk about monitoring, what we're monitoring is just two to fourteen days. That if people got together and they gathered um for the holidays or they went into a large gathering. Um you were expecting to see individuals to come to the hospital and they would need to get help, especially if you're. Having respiratory issues and other. Um other symptoms that are very critical, you will need to get help, so. Ensure that the that covid is still here as much as. We think that it's gone, but um there are individuals that will no show no symptoms. And so it's very important that if you feel like you've been exposed. We really want to protect elders and those with underlying health conditions and. These are the reasons why we keep providing this education is that. We don't want to um. Have any more cases, we want to eliminate covid and if we can do that, we don't. If we do that as a nation without a vaccine or a cure, that's really good. Because that means we followed um all the recommendations to from CDC to address. Quarantining ourselves, isolating ourselves, staying away from large gatherings, but we have, we are educated. And as individuals, if you know that you had covid nineteen symptoms or anything of. Um any fever or coughing or muscle aches, those are some symptoms. And at least ten days in order to be around others. At least ten days since symptoms first appeared, at least twenty-four hours since last fever without using a fever-reducing medication. Such as Ibuprofen or Tylenol. Also, um any symptoms have, that any of the symptoms have improved. But if you're asymptomatic. And you did get tested um and positive for covid nineteen, wait till ten days have passed and that you have no more symptoms. And most likely when you're considered a close contact is it. If you've been with an individual that you know has covid and you've been in a s- a small space within six. Six feet or less, three feet or less. And that you've been around that person for fifteen minutes, especially without any mask, you are very high risk and you would be considered a close contact and would need to. Stay home as well. And as I mentioned before, um we are seeing more cases with um individuals that are younger, so younger individuals in most cases are asymptomatic and are very infectious. So you would have um as individuals that are under eighteen forty-four. And then you have to protect yourself, your friends and your family by taking all the precautions that we talked about. So together we can wear a mask, we can all wear a mask, we can stay six feet apart, we can continue to wash our hands and we can. Continue to stay home and not do any um unnecessary travel. And the disinfectant safety that I was like to mention lastly is that. Um any disinfectants like bleach and Lysol are not a treatment for covid nineteen, so please do not drink or ingest bleach. Read the labels and making sure that we all understand that methanol is very toxic and once it absorbs your skin or intestines. Follow the label, rinse junctions, do not mix any chemicals together, meaning bleach or other. Um products that you don't know, I mean they're very um toxic, like I mentioned. Store chemicals, outer reaches of children, disinfectants are poisonous and can cause harm, so there is a poison helpline. One eight hundred two 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 one two two two. So I just want to thank everyone for listening this afternoon and I hope we all continue to. Take the precautions that we need and also. Participate in very important topics that um were mentioned today, like the census, uh we do count. So ensure that you do um participate safely. If you are at a drive-thru or either. If the census workers come to your home, just make sure that you um practice those safe preventive measures that I mentioned, so. Ichihae non khaadi ehneh ani ah dehna ah di ichihae non kadih ni doh daismas angi. 哈辛dek kosnsaige sheh bechin khaadi um. Khaadi ah kuijen khaadi la tondeh gesudeh but nihiya at eh doh ichihae non kadih ni doh naan hada eh ni yon xin khaadi nas. Minnijin na neh kato haadi. And I just wanted to thank all the listeners and thank you very much.